Got it. Okay. All right. Any, any questions for Rob? All right. Thanks, Rob. Joe, wondering if you, similar to, to Rob, if you can update us on any of the projects? Or are they, are they on hold because of the, the pandemic?
I mean, our work has really shifted to, to sort of salvage and recovery, getting all the Chromebooks distributed for the last month. I think our last meeting was the first week in March. We had appointments scheduled for the, a week and a half later. So which would have been the first week that we were shut down. I've been in conversations with Jason from Kit and Wilson. At this point, we're just waiting for an opportunity to get together with them and get some final numbers in place. Anne has the quote for the, the cellular boosters. The, you know, I'm not sure where we are with simplex for the stuff that needs to get done at a Watten Creek. But, you know, hopefully we can get some of that stuff done. So that either we get the system back to normal or we figure out what we have to do moving forward.
Okay. Good. Thanks. Any questions for Joe? Dave, I have the facilities assessment. Have you down for that? The review, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, you know, I was just looking for that. I don't have that. I'm not finding it on my computer. Kind of wanted to maybe talk through that a little bit. And I know that I had forwarded that to Bob, Patrick and Anne. And I think John and Fury, I think you received a copy of it too. But I don't have it. I'm not finding it on my computer right now. And I didn't know if any, anybody else on, on the call had access to it.
Hi, guys. I'm sorry to interrupt him. I'm sorry for late, being late. I was on another call with Rick and Ben. We were on what Mr. Fittler sent out, which was a Google Hangout. And Rick and Ben are on that, but then I got a Zoom from Anne. So I just want to let you know Rick and Ben are on a Google Hangout. And I figured it out to switch over this email when Anne sent it to me today. So I just wanted to let you guys know.
My, my apologies.
I'll reach out to them.
Okay. I'll text Ben now and let him know.
Okay, thanks. My, my apologies.
Are you talking about the, the study that SOS did, that proposal? Is that what you're referencing?
That they're, that they would plan to do. It's, yeah.
I actually have that document. Do you want me to screen share that right now?
Yeah, yeah. If you could do that, that would be good.
Okay. See if I can do this.
I found it too, if we need to. I'm not so sure if I can screen share or not.
I'm going to give it a try. Let me see if I can make this work. Can folks see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So we became aware of a group in Chester County called SOS. These are folks that provide a couple of different services to school districts. One is to actually provide supplemental, what'd you call it? Supplemental personnel. So they might help with paraprofessionals, with cafeteria staff, with, you know, maintenance and custodial staff and probably just about anything you can think of that where, where we might contract. If we had a need for personnel and we didn't want to hire on our own. But Rich Crumrind, the Vice President, is somebody who I knew of through his wife Jackie, who was a business manager at O N J Roberts. And Rich's, has, has, his background is in facilities. And he, we had a chance to talk to him a little bit about what sort of services they might be able to provide for school districts. And one of them was an, an opportunity to, to do a kind of a, kind of a comprehensive study of our facilities, services and the department in general. You know, and if you're looking at it, you can see items one through four. You know, one could be, you know, one option of these, you know, these are all things that we could take advantage of. Reviewing the current staff level compared to other districts and determine if our staff has the tools, the abilities and is sufficient, you know, to address the needs that we have here in the district. To review the duties of the maintenance staff and custodial staff. Review work order process and all the kind of other things that we do to assure that things are done in a timely manner. And look for efficiencies there and review procedures and practices to identify again efficiencies and, and improvement. So there would be a series of activities that they would come in to do. They would interview key, key personnel. They would look at documentation and, and procedures. And then they would provide us with a kind of a comprehensive report. Ron Miller, who, as you can see here, has 30 years of experience in school facilities, would be the one who would be actually implementing the, the study. And they, they, they provided us with a contract in the event that we were interested. You can also see below, you can see Rich Crumrind's background and resume as well as Ron Miller's. You can kind of get a sense of, of their backgrounds. So this is simply an opportunity, if we wanted to take advantage of it, it does come with a $10,000 cost. And, but it would kind of give us some level of assurance in terms of what we're doing is on track. That we're operating efficiently, that we're adequately staffed, that we have the tools and the procedures, you know, necessary to, to operate our, our facilities program, you know, effectively. So I thought it was a good idea, but I, you know, obviously this is something that the facilities committee needs to kind of reflect on. And, and if, if it's appropriate, I'm not so sure if this requires board approval or whether it's one of those things that the, you know, the school district can take advantage of considering the prices $10,000, whether it's something within the budget. So I'll leave that up to you folks to determine that.
Dave, I just had two questions. Have we ever had something like this done before?
I, I couldn't say. I, I don't think we've done it in, I know we haven't done it in my tenure. And I think everybody who's on this call is associated with facilities are probably within the same. You know, Anne would be the, I guess Anne, you would probably be best able to answer that.
No, we have not had a formal study done of like this of the facility operation. However, we've participated in benchmarking surveys where PASBO conducts them and schools from across the state provide data, metrics, and reports kind of give an idea of how we compare in terms of operations. They don't get into such things as work orders. Maybe their investigation of efficiencies in a study like this is more in depth. These surveys are more establishing benchmarks and seeing how we size up against other districts similar in size to us.
Anne, that was sort of the, sort of going to be my other question. Do you have the results of the, of those PASBO surveys or?
Well, there was one due March 27th and I emailed around that time asking if they were going to extend the date. And this was being conducted through Forecast Five. And all districts were eligible to do it. And but the response I got was yes, it most likely will be extended. Now, I don't know if Rob has had an opportunity to revisit that and complete the survey, but we'll get back on that. And, you know, I'm sure we're the same as other districts where our efforts were redirected.
Sure. Okay. And the other, the other question I had for you, Dave, or for anyone really who, who would have the information. Have we, or could we talk to other school districts who have used these folks just to get a, get a report? Get a recommendation? The, the other side of that question is have they provided us with a client list? People we might be able to contact to, to talk about their work?
I believe at the meeting, they did give us a list of references. Correct, Dave?
Yeah, I don't know whether we, did, did they give us a booklet or something like that, Bob? Do you recall? Did they leave something behind? Because I don't seem to recall that. But I do, I'm pretty sure that there was a district in Berks County that took advantage of it. It might have been Fleetwood.
You know, yeah, I recall from our meeting with them. I believe Ole Valley is using them right now. And, and I think they're actually using them for facilities. Like I think in lieu of a director of facilities, I think they're providing that service for the district. I also know that Antietam used the hiring component. They used them to help them hire a, I'm not sure if it was a facilities director or business manager. I'm not sure the exact role. Those are the two districts within Berks County that I know that have used them. Now, whether there are districts in Berks County that have used them for this specific statement of work, a facilities audit, that I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, we can certainly, I mean, we could certainly investigate that a little bit further. And maybe we have that information, Bob. I just don't.
Yeah, they had brought some documents with them from districts of reports that they have done. I'm not, I believe he didn't leave them with us though, because of certain reasons. I can, we can certainly get a list. I'm, I don't think that's a problem, Mr. Fittler.
Yeah, I mean, if this is something that we have some interest in, we can swing back, you know, with them and get any additional information we want to. I know, John, you had also asked about before whether there are any other vendors out there that do this sort of thing. And the only other one that we were somewhat aware of, and I think Anne referenced this in a prior conversation, was PASBO. And I think Wayne McCullough, but I know Wayne's pretty stretched pretty thin. He's, I think currently, is he the executive director of PASBO right now? Or functions in some similar capacity? And you saw him, I'm sure, on the, the webinar from the other day. Coordinating that on the COVID-19 virus. So what is his current role with PASBO?
He is the executive director.
Yeah. And Wayne was the one, of course, who came in and did our transportation study and RFP. And, and that was, that was Wayne. Yeah. So I, I, this is, he's a very, he's a multi-talented guy, obviously, but I'm not, I'm not so sure how available Wayne is in his current capacity as executive director, I think. And is that a relatively new position for him? Or is, I know he's been with PASBO, but executive director, is that new?
After Jay Himes retired, the former executive director, Wayne was appointed to that position and Hannah Barrick is kind of like the assistant executive director. She deals with a lot of the legislative issues.
Yeah. So I, I mean, in talking to, I think his name was Rob Miller and Rich Crumrind. I mean, these, these are two guys that have a lot of experience in this area. And I'm sure that they would do a, an excellent job. It would give us some level of assurance in terms of, you know, operating efficiencies. As a board, I think we would, we've always had some questions in terms of are we adequately staffed? You know, you know, we always have questions about, you know, how are we addressing various aspects of our facilities? And is our, are our procedures and protocols and long-term planning? Is this on par with standards that we would expect, you know, at, you know, industry standard?
Right. Well, I think it sounds like a terrific idea. And my, my interest in seeing who else did it was more from a cost standpoint from, than anything else. In other words, if somebody else can do the same thing for two-thirds the cost, three-quarters the cost, whatever, it might be worth considering. I know we don't have to do bidding per se, but I just find it, it's always helped me to look at other options. And I think you make better choices if you have more than, more than one option. What, what do you recommend, Dave, in terms of reaching out to Wayne to see if, see if he would even be interested? Or has the background, the kind of background that SOS has to see if we might want to have him submit a proposal?
Well, I think Anne has the inside track on, on Wayne. You know, she's a member of PASBO and probably sees Rain or Wayne periodically and might, might have his contact information. And maybe Anne, have you already spoken to him about any, any of this sort of thing?
I have not, but PASBO does do various studies. And I'm thinking that, that he would, I could, what I could do is send an email asking if they do have a team of people that are currently available to do something and what would be the cost?
Okay. But John, my, my suggestion would be we, we allow Anne to kind of communicate with PASBO. And if there's any, any other vendors out there, I don't, you know, I'm not married to this group in any way. But I, I have confidence in them that if, you know, we, we choose them, that they would do an excellent job. I know, I know Rich, I know his wife Jackie, just, I know Rich just because of Jackie Crumrind, who was the business manager at, at O N J. And he's a good guy. He's, I think he used to be at Great Valley, if I'm not mistaken, as their facilities director there years ago. And, and Ron, Ron Miller, I forget what it says, but in his, you can see at the bottom of the page. Patrick, if you go all the way down the very end, I think you'll see, see the information on. Yeah, he was, he was at Phoenixville. This is, this is Miller.
Okay. Well then, Anne, we'll wait to hear from you. I would say no hurry in reaching out to PASBO. I know you've got a, a ton of things on your plate. So, you know, whenever you have a, as the, as the saying goes, whenever you have a few spare minutes and can shoot him an email, that would be great. And we'll, we'll include that on the next, next meeting agenda. Any questions for Dave or any questions about this proposal? All right. Great. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, thanks you, John. Thanks, John, for putting it on the agenda.
I thought next we'd cover just briefly, by the way, it was Rick, yeah. Rick, I apologize to you. I sent you the wrong link and I didn't realize I was sending you the wrong link. So I gotta, I gotta figure out how to read links better so I don't send you to a, a closet somewhere. So I apologize for that. And to, and to you too, Ben. What, what is, what is that Google chat? Is it just sort of like this, but not this?
Well, when I put it on the calendar, it seems there is a Google chat automatically set up. But I put the Zoom instructions in the description area. So I'll have to figure out whether you delete the Google. It's kind of like an automatic thing, Joe.
You can actually pull down where that link automatically generates and just say, don't include link. And then it disappears.
Great.
I've got to learn that too. Thanks, Joe.
I'll add it to our list, John.
Okay, great. Thank you. I thought I'd spend a few minutes on, and Anne, please jump in. As I said earlier, we had a meeting with A E M, the architects for the transportation center. And it was kind of, for, for my purpose, it was just to bring, bring me up to speed. So that in addition to the information, Anne supplied me the paperwork, a nice fat file of information. It was good to hear from, is it Chris Anne from?
Philip Mindock and John Kowalski.
Yeah, about the project. And I, I guess the, there's nothing new in, in the project, except that I think if anything, we want to downsize a bit. And certainly in, in the wake of the coronavirus, we might be looking at different ways and more careful ways to spend money. But one point I did make is that we want to also be sure that, that we don't just downsize, but that we also give Rick and his, and the drivers what they need. And I think the, what's, what's influencing my decision and my desire to proceed with this project is the report that Wayne did for us about our transportation operations and, and the very solid vote of confidence that report gave to our transportation team. And so I want to be sure that we preserve that. And my desire to complete the project is to have something that reflects the report that Wayne did in pretty much establishing that we have a world-class operation, at least a state-class operation. And, and of course, the obvious decision not to outsource it, which wasn't justified by looking at the numbers. So that, that's, that's what I wanted to say as a result of that meeting. It was a very helpful meeting. And as I recall, Phil is going to reexamine the, the blueprint or the plan for that, reflecting our desire to cut costs where we can, but to also make sure that we give the transportation folks an improved facility over the one on Kerr Road. And do you have anything to add to that? Is that, does that kind of capture it? Did I miss anything?
No, that pretty much captures it. We also need to get an idea of additional cost in coming up with a, a reset plan, a plan or a design that we would feel comfortable with going for variants. So, but get that estimated cost from them so that we could come to the full board for approval to, to move ahead with that. You know, I emailed Phil and he's going to reach out to his consultants, people he works with to, you know, provide us with an estimate. My recollection, we may have been, oh, 60% through the, the last contract. And then of course that, that ended. So, you know, since we'll be redoing some design and obviously have to incorporate, you know, some alternates about propane tank, which could be down the road. But just having a plan that limits our vulnerability is the term that I feel used in, in trying to get this variance.
Right.
So, so I'm waiting for that. He was looking for a timeline of when we want this cost estimate. And I'm not sure after our discussions on the eighth with business function. You know, where do we want to? Yeah. How do we want to proceed? So I think we definitely have at least another month, you know, to come before the board. I'm not sure what people's thoughts are in trying to get the go-ahead or the blessing though. Okay, let's start resetting and getting a plan together.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Anne. Any thoughts on that from board members or from anyone else on the, on the call?
Yeah, I just, I, I just had a question about, you know, in your conversation with Phil, did he give you any sense of a timeline that he had? You know, in, in, in regard to maybe revising the, the plan for the, for the facility? Who he would be using to assist with that? And whether or not he's planning on contracting with a surveyor, civil engineer for a, you know, to help with the site plan that would ultimately need to be presented to the zoning hearing board?
He's actually asking what our timeline is. But he did say they really wouldn't be able to begin in earnest until the summertime. You know, they work with S D I, the same company that partners with KCBA. You know, the electrical engineers and I'm not sure who else they partner with, you know, engineers.
I thought it was Stackhouse Benninger.
Well, that would be for land development.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I can.
They would need to, they would need to work up the, the land development plan in addition to the actual building sketch.
You're right. That probably would want to be one of their first contacts. So let me get some more detail from him. But again, because of this stay-at-home order, we do have some time. So I'll talk more about a timeline and get the costs and then bring it back to the board to see if we are, if and when, you know, we will move ahead.
And, and, and one of the things that, that Phil did say last week, you know, for the benefit of those folks that weren't able to make the call, which I thought was a good point, was that, you know, when we, when we submit that additional, that, that original proposal for the variants, we should think about not only what we need now, but what potentially we may need down the road. Because it's going to be easier to get the full approval at one time than to have to, you know, go back down the road. So for example, you know, if our enrollment trend, you know, shifts and it goes up five years down the road and that requires us to potentially, you know, have to expand our fleet of buses. Or if we decide to go more with propane and we need to put a propane filling station in down the road, that even if we don't do the excavation and the paving and all of that at this point in time, at least asking for the variance of what we may need land-wise. He did recommend that, that it would be better to do that at the outset than to try to go back and have to go through the zoning process again, even if it's five years out.
Right. Thank you, Patrick. I neglected to mention that.
Was there anything that comes to mind that would be needed beyond the fundamental plan that we have? And the, I know we've talked about obviously, you know, making available a site for the fueling for propane. And, you know, and, and establishing that, that, you know, and carving out a specific area that would be available for parking and, and everything else that's related to as well as the fencing and so forth. But I mean, beyond that, I, I can't, I can't imagine that there would be anything that we would be contemplating. The additional construction.
No, I was thinking more so space for parking and the, and the potential filling station if we decided to go more propane down the road. Those were my two thoughts.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we should definitely integrate propane into the, into the plan. At least, I mean, I think that's the direction, you know, the board is kind of established is when we renew our fleet, that we try to move as much as possible in the direction of propane, but.
Did we also discuss, you know, if in the future we wanted to add on an additional bay, that all the, the prep work, the slab, whatever is done with the initial phase?
Yeah, I think, well, my understanding, if I heard him correctly, was that you, you would get like the, the size building, the, the four bays and that, that you get that approved. That's not what you have to build. So if you're going to build something less, that's fine. But then if you find in, you know, 15 years, you want to add another bay, you know, you don't have to go through the, the whole process again. So, yeah, the four bay building, you know, would be approved, but that's not what you have to build. You could build a three bay building. You could cut back on, on some of the stuff.
Got it.
Yeah, along with the propane too, you know.
Right.
It's not feasible to put the propane station in now for two buses. But, you know, if you have that in the plans that are approved, then whenever you can put that in.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. And John, I would just like to say too, I think it's also important that we, we have, maybe we revisit this conversation with the board in light of the current circumstances as Anne mentioned. You know, it's just one of our capital projects. Is this one that we want to continue to support? Is this one that is considered non-essential and can be, you know, put on a back burner? You know, I think we had, this has been on a back burner for so long and this is such a, I think it's an important project that I, I would like to encourage the board to kind of, despite everything we're dealing with right now, to seriously realize that, you know, the importance of, of establishing a. Realize that, you know, the importance of of establishing a an appropriate facility and moving forward with it, we could. But I think we need to get a definitive response from the board. Wouldn't you think so?
Yes, I I agree, Dave. I'm with you. I think it's important. It's it's been on the back burner long enough. But I, you know, I'd be interested in hearing from the rest of the board and I. And I've seen you raise your hand several times. So and hearing. So why don't you go ahead?
That's okay. I I must have missed the last meeting. So are we saying that? We were approved to have this done at a Watten? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Not approved. No, we still have to go for township approval, but it's coming upon us to. Have plans ready to go when we're determined to submit those plans. Is that is that how am I reading that correctly, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, when when we talked to the township folks initially, it was Hunter, myself. Had a had a conversation with the codes officer. And he basically outlined a process that we had to to follow. And, you know, part of that was that we needed to come forward with a a site plan. And 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 fill out the application appropriately. And so Phil Linebuck from AEM, the architect, the guy. Who I think I think he's the chief or the principal in that particular company. He would sort of take charge of that and actually do and and present the information to the township zoning home zoning hearing board. And. And and there's no guarantee that we would that we would actually get the approval. But the conditions are very favorable right now because we have a much better relationship with the township. We're in a. A much more. Friendly environment, you know, and and we've actually received, you know, some support, you know, for the project at a Watten. From from that group. So when you have that level of support. At that there, I mean, it's a it's a good sign, but we still have some public relations, things that we have to be concerned about. You know, we have to, you know, consider, you know, how the project was originally received by the community. Back when it was originally proposed back in, what was that, two thousand fourteen? Yeah, and and I think we have to be very careful, you know, about, you know, how we message this. Out, you know, to the community and not run into the same roadblocks that we had previously with the perception that this was a elaborate. Project.
Yeah.
My other question was, John, you had made a comment downsized a couple of times when you were discussing it in the beginning. Were you seeing downsized from? The original plan that they had? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, and I think along the lines of, I was speaking along the lines of of Dave's line of thought that that we. If if not make it smaller, find ways to economize.
Right.
In light of current budget situations, the current. Cloud we're under with the coronavirus, I think I think the whole atmosphere is going to shift. In terms of spending by any organization, whether it's a school, public body, or even even a private company. So, yeah, I I don't certainly didn't imply, and I don't want anyone to infer, that I'm thinking of. You know, giving giving Rick and his folks something that's dramatically smaller. We certainly want to be able to accommodate the buses, the people. But that we look for ways to. Again, pointing to Dave, who's in the upper right-hand part of my screen, so I'll just point this way. To to recognize the current. Current conditions and our own budget considerations, which which have really kind of dominated the last few meetings. So. Yeah, if maybe downsize isn't the right word, economize, I think is perhaps the better word.
Yeah. Yeah, and I and I know when when we talked about this project, we talked about it in conjunction with a few other projects that we were considering and. As we were thinking about, you know, issuing new debt in the form of capital projects. And and, you know, this wouldn't have, you know, a. I don't believe, and and Anne is a better judge of this, it wouldn't have. A real significant impact upon our annual annual budget, but. Because we would, you know, obviously spread out the costs of this over time. As like as we do with any capital project, but it would it would have, it would it would, I'm assuming. Have some impact upon the budget, you know, the upcoming budget, I mean, if we would move forward with it.
And I think along along that line of thought, I think it's important for us to understand just what what that impact would be. And I think, Anne, we've talked about that. If we could, if we could see what that looked like in terms of the taxpayer, that would certainly help me make. The right decisions too.
I agree, John.
Any other comments or questions about the Transportation Center? Rick, have we missed anything or misstated anything from your perspective? Ben too.
No, everything. It's what it was. It's fine.
Yeah. Okay, good.
John, I'm just wondering whether this this coming Tuesday, whether when we report back to the board, whether. You know, the the facilities report might include. Some opportunity to have some discussion about this and at least try to find some. Evidence of whether there's consensus among the board to to continue to move forward with this.
Yeah, that that's a very good thought, Dave, and I'll be sure to put that at the top of my report on Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, I think. We are. Oh, Dave, I have you down for the, speaking of projects. The the administration building project, I I guess, I guess it's it's incumbent upon us to. Sort of prioritize these projects in terms of of, you know, need to have. Want to have, nice to have, or let's just let's just put it on the back burner. So with that in mind, do you have anything to report on that? The administration. Building project.
Yeah, I mean, the the one thing that comes to my mind is a a proposal that we received from McClure Company. If you recall, we were looking at maybe some form of feasibility study. And McClure sent us a an offer, I think it. Again, it's a document that I don't have at my fingertips. Maybe somebody out there does. Patrick, you're seem to be doing a pretty good job with this. But it might not be a bad idea to take a look at that document and. And and see whether or not it's something we want to move forward with. This would at least give us a better sense of what we might be looking at. If and when we would move into that particular project. I I have to agree with you, John. I mean, in terms of. You know, priorities, when we look at what we're dealing with right now. I I'm questioning how far we want to go with this at this time. On the other hand, I do know that we have a tremendous degree of inefficiency in that building in terms of our energy costs. And and, you know, there may be some things that we could. Do to kind of mitigate that. And a five thousand dollars in investment would help us. You know, in a redesign of at least the energy systems to some degree. It might be. It might be a value. So this is the document that you're seeing here. This came from. McClure and and basically says, you know, we're considering building improvements and reconfiguration, which would require, you know. A modification to the HVAC. Systems and 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 provide also some upgrades to that system. And and so, you know, this proposal goes through, as you can see, an energy analysis. And. Establishing some project goals. One of the goals that we had, as everybody knows, I think at this point is that we would be reconfiguring the office space. And pushing everything to the eastern side of the building as much as we can. Two two reasons there to to kind of concentrate our HVAC. Services in that in that area and then also segregate another side where that might become available in the future. For the community use and maybe, you know, rental to various organizations that might might want to take advantage of. The other available space. So. The proposed solution, you can see, I mean, they've got all kinds of of. Ways they can they can look at this. And. If you could go down a little bit farther, Patrick, and take a look at the pop the project benefits. Yeah, identify some cost reductions. Coordinate construction, reduction, elimination of of construction phasing. There's a whole lot of stuff in here that would that. A lot of which is beyond my my full understanding, but I'm assuming when people like Rob look at it. And and look at it, this makes more sense to you guys. So. Again, a small investment gives us a much better picture of what we're kind of moving into here. The project itself, though, is not. As we said before, is just not. A an essential, but it is, I think, necessary at some point in the future.
Couple of questions, Dave. Do we have a do we have a sense of how how long this? Initial look see would be good for. In other words, let's say we 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 have them do this for five thousand dollars. And we we put it on the back burner, the actual work. And then three years from now, we decide to go ahead. Are they going to have to come back in and sort of redo this? Or would this be good for some period of time?
That's a good point, John. I mean, you know, i- if if we have any sense that this has limited value. If we don't move on it immediately, you know, it might be one of these things that we. We hold off on, but but recognize that it's available to us. When and if we really start to look at this project.
Yeah.
Seriously. Again, I think it might be another one of these situations where the board. Possibly this Tuesday. Needs to consider this in light of everything else and help us decide whether or not. We want to incorporate this into a, you know, one of our capital projects going forward, or whether or not this is something that we should. You know, hold back on simply because of. All the uncertainties economically.
Right. I'm just wondering, do you think we could get a a a notion from McClure about about that timeframe? Would that be possible?
We could get. We could get McClure in in any time to kind of give us as much of a description and of this as we need. So I don't know whether we want to necessarily bring McClure into the board meeting, but we could certainly. Include McClure in the next facilities committee meeting.
Okay.
And we could, we could put her on the screen and and have her have her walk through the, you know, the proposal with us and we can ask yes, ask some of those questions.
All right, let's do that. And then in my report on Tuesday, that that's what I'll report, that we're going to have McClure come in. I'll mention the. The cost estimate, but I'll also say that one of the questions we want to know is. How long the estimate is good for?
Yeah.
Yeah, Alyssa would be really good about that. I don't think that would be an issue getting that from her.
Bob, did you want to make that connection with her when the time comes?
I certainly can. Just whenever the board wants me to do it, just let me know.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Bob, and thanks, Dave, for the report.
Let me ask, I'm just questioning whether Rob had any question, any comments about this.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Proposal. Any thoughts?
There we go. Yeah, no, I mean, that's fine. You know, if it's the if this is decided as a. A project that needs to move forward, obviously, I'll do what I need to do. And and, you know, I don't want to speak for McClure, but. If they did that study and they they identified HVAC upgrades or or different configurations. That would most likely stay the same two years from now, three years from now, unless we drastically change how we use this building. The only thing that wouldn't stay constant is whatever pricing they gave out for that work. So that that's been my experience. And like I said, I don't want to speak for them directly, but, you know, any of their recommendations will obviously. Continue forward as long as the 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 usage stays the same. It's just the pricing of 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 what they're offering to do. That that's not. That's usually good for, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days sometimes. So that that's just like two cents there.
Great. Thanks, Rob.
Rob, Rob, they also, this is a credit. To do, do you get a sense that McClure would be an appropriate? Resource for us in in terms of the architects for this project, if we were to go that way, or? Or would we have separate architect for the HVAC or the energy portions of this building and and? I mean, is there are there times when we have, you know, two architectural firms that are working together, or is it typically just?
Yeah, I mean, if we do the bus garage, we'll have that right with KCBA. So. Yeah, I mean, I I would have any problems doing that, especially if they're considering crediting of the 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 study. Against any of the further work they do. So.
Yeah.
But Bus Garage is AEM.
Yeah, but if I I was saying, if we did the bus garage, we'd have AEM and KCBA because they're doing all our HVAC projects. So. We are already using two different.
Well, yeah, I guess we'll have to look into that because when he talks about his consultants. Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay, anything else on the Loush Building project? Questions or comments? All right, I think we have one more item, and that's Tom's item on the high school track. Tom, maybe what you could do is summarize the note you sent around. And then we'll we'll go from there. How's that?
Sounds great. I'm actually, I want to I want to try to. Start a little bit in the in the past and work my work our ways to the current. And I'm going to ask Anne. And Rob along the way, if if you need to add anything, or if I'm incorrect on something, please, please chime in. So. When the original. Track in the stadium went from gravel to cinders to synthet- the rubber. Something happened with construction. I don't know if Anne remembers. Or even if Rick remembers, but something happened majorly with the track. Where from the onset, it was just off, but it continued with the contractor. To be redone. So five years ago, when Mr. Brady was the head of facilities, we walked the track. And there was a lot of cracking that were come that comes from. Outside the track in front of the home bleachers and in front of the visitor bleachers and around the surrounding area of the track outside. That moves towards inside the track and across the track, there's cracks. And five years ago, the company who came in that gave us a proposal to redo our track said, we can. Basically resurface your track, make it look nice. But in five, this is a patch job, and in five years, you're going to be revisiting this again, and you can. Resurface it again, and you can patch it. And in five years from then, you're going to see this again. Well, the contractor was correct five years ago because to date, in about a month, it was five years that. The track needs repaired. Rob and I walked the track in December-ish because Anne asked us what we thought. I, just given the circumstances of what we're going through, were was going to try to push it off for a year. But it was determined that. That either this year being the fifth year of what was already stated previously, or next year. That this track is in in. It's it's not good. And Rob, Rob can probably comment on that a little little further with all the cracks. So, Patrick, while I'm talking, if if there's a way, please, that you could pull up my email from yesterday, because you know how to do that. I do not. So that everybody could see that. But. So. We. There's three different phases, three different options you can do. One option, one is to resurface again what they did five years ago. Which would just patch it for five years. There's another option that they're saying is about ten-year, a ten-year. Off project that would try to alleviate the cracks. And then there's a twenty-year solution, which is what was presented five years ago. That would take care of all the cracking and would give you twenty years for your track. Well, after the business functions meeting last week, actually after Thursday, when the governor closed school for the rest of the year. And and PIAA spring sports were canceled. I just kind of thought about some things and thought a little bit outside the box. Two weeks ago, we hosted annual. Relay for Relay Relay for Life event. On June fourteenth, every single year, we've been doing it for the past, I believe, eight years. And. They contacted me and canceled for this year. And um. Given if we're closed per the country for the remainder of the summer. Possibly redoing the track this year versus next year. Um, if we don't do it this summer, then the track would technically be closed for two summers. Which also in in involves revenue that you can't have anyone on the turf when you're redoing the track. Um, and instead of two summers uh being it being closed, they the a comp- a track company could come in and start as soon as tomorrow. Being essential to redo the track. So had a couple of conversations with a couple of people and just wanted to kind of put this in writing. Um, I think, and I'll let Rob talk, I think that the track speaks for itself in terms of it needs repaired at some point very soon. But as Patrick, and thank you, Dr. Winters, for putting that up, um, you can see my email. That's kind of a summary, Mr. Fiddler, so I hope I, any questions, please ask.
Um, the only question I have at this point, I may have others based on our discussion. You you pointed out in the email about the potential for injury, and that's certainly that has to be one of our. If not, well, maybe it's our chief concern. We don't want people being injured in workouts uh in in competitions. Or people just pedestrians, uh visitors just coming across the track and somebody stumbles. And then I guess we're, you know, we're liable for that. But I am interested in, do you have any documented reports of injuries that have occurred so far? Because of these problems with this track?
There was an issue a couple of years ago with our long jump runway. And we did address that when that injury occurred. But as to the track, off the top of my head. No one has approached me that said they got injured because of this crack in the track or this um off base um. Leveling. To answer your question, I do not recall of any, but I do know that there are holes in the track um. From the track material lifting up. That obviously is a potential hazard for an injury.
Sure. Okay. Well, maybe it'd be it would be well to let the coaches know and even let the participants know here at Exeter. And just say, let keep keep an eye out and certainly, you know, run safely. But I know when you're in the heat of competition, you can't always judge every step you take because you want to cross the finish line first. But it might be well for us to do that, to document um injury. Even a turned ankle can be a disaster for a sprinter, a distance runner. So I I just sort of throw that out as something you can do. Maybe, you know, start a list uh on on your iPhone or on your computer and and let's document these. You hear about a student who who's injured so that we can establish a um, no pun intended, a track record of of what's going on. Having said that, I I'm still think that the potential for injury. Needs to be a driving force here in our decision about what to do and when. But I just thought it might be prudent to make sure that we do have a uh. A documented record of injuries that have occurred because of this uh because of these problems.
Mr. Fiddler, from from what I understand, at least as long as I've been here, the district has not had any documentation of an injury. That being said, going forward, it would be very difficult and probably more putting us more in a liable situation. If we were to knowingly tell people that we have an unsafe track and avoid those areas, number one. Number two, the officials that we bring to the events, typically PIAA officials, Pennsylvania Interscholastic Athletic Association officials. Have a duty to assess the playing fields. And if they are deemed unsafe, they will not let the event occur. So we we really are going to get ourselves in a bind if if if, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, we have unsafe facilities. And we try to have an event with that. Um, I've seen the cracks. Um, you know, during the fall, we were where I I pulled Mr. Legath over. There's one area of the uh innermost lane, which would be used at every event. Long distance sprints, what have you. It looks as if a horse had been running. It's a huge round, almost of a of a shape of a horse, a hoof print. The the danger there goes beyond just telling someone, you know, don't step there.
Sure.
Um, so you know, as much as I hear you, I think that makes it even more difficult for us to not either take some steps. To mitigate our situation. Or possibly, if we're not going to go forward with this. Um, and Mr. Legath can can answer this, possibly put off having events in our facility for the year. I I don't see any other opportunity, Mr. Legath.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Phillips, you are correct. And I and I, going back to the whole PIAA officials. And there there were a couple of instances when my coach uh did come to me and say, hey, look, you know. It was a pole vault. Uh, this need this needs to be fixed because the the official's not going to let us run this. Um, Rob, maybe you can express, I know uh you shared some things with me about the track um that you'd like to say from your standpoint.
No, I mean, I'm not adding any new information to this conversation. I just, you know, I have seen the track. I've seen the condition it's in. And if we're going to utilize it and if we're going to use it as a revenue stream, uh, we need to uh, we need to take care of it. And we need to repair it. And again, uh, sooner rather than later. And I know the the preliminary discussions before all the the craziness started between me and Mr. Legath was, you know, either this year or next year. But I think with this opportunity, uh, you know, to get this project done now. And not lose that revenue for next summer, if it were to be pushed off back then. I mean, you know, that that would be my recommendation. Um, and again, you know, you talk about the three different options. I've I must have seen six or seven different versions of these proposals, so I'd have to see what the 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 latest one is. But you know, obviously, the the five-year fix is cheaper than the 10-year fix. But if you add the two five-year fixes together, they're more expensive than the 10-year fix. So you know, that's that's a decision that's going to have to be uh, you know, discussed and, you know, and 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 fed it out. So.
Hey, uh, Tom, i- if we, you know, delay fixing this one more year. Like, can you put dollars and cents to what the potential loss of revenue would be?
I I can. I can't tell you right now because there's numerous things that we I would have to write them down, but I could.
I just, you know, that might be useful information to have as well because I know especially within athletics. So many of our facilities are used for things other than Exeter sports. And what I heard you say is that if we don't do it this summer, then we're looking at two consecutive summers where that facility couldn't be used. And so, you know, I'd love to know how much revenue we potentially would lose not being able to use it next summer as well.
Yeah, and I and I can definitely do that. And I guess, you know, one of the things is is just now is depending on if it happens, when it happens. And what option there is, there there's a lot of time, and I say a summer. Um, even if we're out in June, I I don't see anyone using using um going in the stadium till the middle of August. Um, and that's why I kind of thought to myself now where sometime in May. Possibly this could be done July 1st, um, middle second week of July. And then it's taken care of for the entire the next year. But yes, Dr. Winters, I can um give a preliminary uh price. Of how much revenue would be generated.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Do you have prices for what the five-year patch would cost at this point?
I do. Yep. I have five, 10, and 20. Would you like to hear them?
Yeah, please.
Yes, please.
Okay. So. Five-year um. 345,000. 10-year. 475,000. And 20-year, 650,000. And please give or take, you know, these are rough.
These are all repatching projects, Tom?
So option, well, so so again, and Rob, you can kind of help me with this. But option one is just resurfacing the track, not touching any of the cracks. Outside of their outside of the four-foot-high or six foot uh four-foot-high interior fences, which is where the problems are coming from. Option two is resurfacing the track and trying um to cut right outside of the fe- the interior fence. To try to stop more cracks from coming in. And option three is the 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 big one that addresses everything, fixes the cracks. Paves everything and addresses where no more cracks will occur. And it's basically like a 20-year fix, which is what, if the construction's done right the first time. You wouldn't have to, you would do the option one every year. But because option one wasn't done in the early 2000s correctly. Is why this problem is still occurring with these tracks running from the bleachers through the track. Um, and that's what I think five years ago with Mr. Brady is. He wanted to address in five years, which is currently now, but patch it and hold off five years to see where we're at.
And what what's the, and if you said this, I apologize if I didn't hear it correctly. What what's the cause of this? Is it faulty material? Is it workmanship? I- i- is it weather, uh, too much use? What 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 are we? What have we identified?
I'm, I am in a night, I'm athletics. So, Rob, click, I have no idea.
I thought I let you stammer there for a few more seconds. Um, yeah, I believe from from my investigations and from what I've read and the contractors I've dealt with with Tom. Um, it it the the thought process is is that the the mecatum or asphalt walkway uh that encircles the track. Um, that, you know, the visitors walk on and stuff on the other side of the fence. That that is in poor shape and those cracks are expanding into the. The base of the planes or the base of the track surface. Um, when when Tom first started getting pricing in that, one of the vendors uh suggested we do a core drilling. To make sure that the soils in the subbase of that track were suitable because a lot of times that's where your cracks will come from. So we actually went ahead and did that, I think, with another vendor. We, I you know, we 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 dealt with quite a few. Uh, but we did have a core drilling uh done on that track to uh to check out the subsurface and it came back fine. Uh, it came back that there was no issues with that sub uh the the subsurface of that track. So so now the 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 next likely culprit is that paved area around the track. That that's uh that the cracks are coming from. So, you know, I think the. Uh, and I'd have to look at the proposal again because like I've said, I've I've seen several different uh iterations of this. These proposals from from numerous vendors. Um, but I believe that the the high-ticket one, I think the 20-year one addresses that outer walkways. And I'm not quite sure that the first two options do.
You're you are correct with that, Rob.
And Rob, and maybe Tom knows this one as well, but is it what I was reading also, it stated that we had went with uh either a two-inch or a four-inch track. When it was recommended to use six inches. So we we purposely went a little on the cheaper side, and that's what also is is causing this. And I don't know if which option you you, you know, you outlined, one of them is a thicker track. Is that correct?
When you say the six inches for uh four inches versus six inches, are you talking about the track surface or the walkway?
The track surface.
Uh, well, I think, Bob, I think what that was taught, that was in the early stages in October where we didn't know. If it was like Rob just said with the core sampling, if it was the track. And Rob, you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just trying to remember, is is that's what we were talking about in October, not knowing yet without the core sampling done. If it was the track underneath the track.
So we're not, we're not looking to to go from a four-inch to a six-inch. We're just, okay, okay. So it truly seems to be the cracking on the outside.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, one of my favorite, one of my favorite questions is, ha- have we talked to anyone else in Berks County or elsewhere? Who has this kind of track and who may be undergoing these kinds of problems? And have we asked them what they're doing about them?
Uh, no, but I can. And um, yeah, I I very easily can. I again. It from my and and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not, it's not the track surface. It's what's going on outside of the track, which is coming into our art on our track surface.
Right. So in other words, if there if there are, let's say, three of the 18 school districts who who have a track like ours. With an outer uh walkway. That's causing these problems, it just might be interesting to pick, pick some brains and say, well, what are you guys doing about this? Because we're experiencing the same thing.
Yep, absolutely. I can, I can definitely ask.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Question, if we go with the 10-year fix, um, which does not take care of the outer cracking. Um, is there a guarantee that within those 10 years, i- if there's an issue, they come out and they will fix it?
I don't, I I don't know. Um, Rob, you might be able to help me on that one.
I would have to read the documentation, but normally, especially projects of this size. If you're not addressing the root cause, uh, they'll give you a ballpark of how long their fix will last. Uh, but they won't warranty it or anything like that. And I'll give you an example is our tennis courts. Uh, when we did the the patching on those tennis courts uh for the cracks over at Loush and at the senior high school. Your contractor said, you know, this should last you a year, but it could last you a week. Uh, so, you know, I know that that it is what it is. So I, like I said, I haven't read the fine print of those proposals. But, you know, I I would have to assume that since the, since the the major issue causing or believed to be causing the cracks isn't being addressed. That that there there'd be no warranty or any kind of uh promise that that's going to last 10 years.
And.
Yeah, I was going to ask the 20, the 20-year fix, that does address the outer and the cracks and all that.
Yes. And that's what five years ago, we were also told when Mr. when Mr. Brady was the head of facilities. Um, we all, and and at the time, Rob was not here, it was Mr. Pitts. We all knew what the root cause was.
Right.
And Ann, maybe you can also um support what I'm saying, so I'm not incorrect. That we did know what what the the ultimate problem was.
That we did or didn't? Oh, I can't recall.
Okay.
Uh, but I did want to ask, uh, I know you've been working with different vendors. Do we, even though these this is state contracts or KPN, it's already been bid. It's still best practice to try and get three different quotes, whether it's.
Sure.
A, B, and C.
Yep.
To uh compare.
Absolutely. And Ann, do you, just while you just asked that, do you recall back in early 2000s or Rick Wegman? What happened to the original, I I don't even know if this is the right word, but subbase or whatever of the track? And what, something happened? There's construction that went bad?
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I don't remember. Uh, I was not involved directly.
If I remember right, it was just the base was put in poorly and from the beginning it was wavy.
Okay.
So um, but if your cracks are coming from the outer walkway. Uh, really, the only way to fix that is is actually what, put a a footer. You know, of of three-foot footer in all the way around, a cement footer that the freezes and thaws wouldn't affect. And of course, that's really expensive. But uh, that would, that would put a barrier, that would separate your walkway and your track surface.
And I think that's what option three is here for everybody.
Yeah, probably, but the the put footer in that goes down below the the frost line.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but yes, the original, the original one was wavy. Um. And yeah, there were problems with the, so that first base was not put in very good.
Thank you. I think it originally started, Dr. Phillips, what you were talking about. And if I'm not mistaken, we could start down there by the maintenance garage where the start is for the sprint events. where the start is for the sprint events. That, that straightaway runway, but down by the tennis courts where the maintenance garage is where the wavy part started. The base, the bad base.
Yeah. And then too, I don't know how good it has been to have years ago, like for May Days or whatever, had the township trucks backing up on their, the weight of the township trucks backing up on there to unload things. I don't know how good that was for things either. So.
That hasn't happened since I've been here. We, uh, we've had other discussions with that. But yeah, probably damage was done.
Yeah. But, but that's what I recall on it.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Tom, how many, how many times did we do that patch, the five-year patch?
Uh, since I've been here, we just did it in 2015.
Okay, so we've just done it once?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, now, I think before that, and Anne sent me some numbers before, something was done in 2006. But again, I don't know details of what was done. I was not here in 2000, I was, uh, in 2006. So I do not know what the full details of what was done to the track. Um, but I do know that the, this just resurfacing was done in 2000, uh, summer of 2015.
Okay. So if we possibly have done it twice already, if possible, that would have paid the entire 650 that you're talking about for doing a 20-year now. It, can we find out what the guarantee or warranty, whatever you want to call it, for the 20-year would be?
Yeah, I mean, and again, I think it goes back to is, is the, I don't know about the whole project on the outer, outside of the track. I want to try to act like I know what I'm talking about here, is, is that outside of the track, but the track surface would have a warranty no matter what.
Okay.
Rob, correct me if I'm wrong there.
Like I said, I, I'd like to review the, the actual proposal, but, you know, that, that's the general thought there. So, uh, with, with a project to that scale and addressing the issue like that, you know, you know, you'd have to discuss what the warranty is and, and uh, what the strength of that warranty would be.
Okay. Well, in my opinion, liability-wise, it's obviously something we have to take care of. Um, and with the numbers you gave, it makes more sense to do the 20-year for me, but I would like to know more about what that is in regards to i- if that crack happens again, then what? If we're putting that amount of money in like that.
And I will find all that out.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have a question for Anne. Um, Anne, when we had our business functions meeting, where did we, where did we leave this? Where did we leave our decision-making with the, the track project?
Uh, let me just, I was putting notes, just give me a second to pull up my, see if I noted something here.
We were going through the process of essentials and non-essentials and taking some projects off of the list. And, um, I just don't recall exactly where we stood.
The comment that Hunter meant, that, that Connor made at that point was that he was not inclined to move it to this summer. And I think that was based on, okay, let's, you know, keep our spending, capital spending to, uh, a minimum, what's essential. But I think conversations have happened since the eighth. So I'm not sure where his, uh, what his position is on that at this point.
So, so what you're saying is that it sounded like it was going to be a one-year deferred project, but I think Tom is describing some of the conditions that are ideal for trying to take care of it this summer, considering the fact that the, the field itself won't be in use for a period of time. And it's an opportune time to really kind of do construction work. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering whether it makes sense for us to revisit this, you know, as a, as a board. You know, I have to agree with Anne, you know, I think we have liabilities. I mean, once the board is aware that we've got a, a track that is delaminating, it's got an irregular surface, it's got ridges. If there's an injury, you know, we were, we were warned, we were aware. And that puts us in, I think, a very compromised position. So, so I, I think it all the more reason why it's necessary that if we're going to use that track and we know its condition, that we take care of it. Or else, you know, get off the track, you know, relocate our, our, um, our events. Um, I'm just, I'm concerned that once we know this, you know, we have some responsibility.
And we know it right now.
We don't, yeah.
Uh, Tom, uh, and, and maybe thoughts from the board and, and the administration, everybody on the call. Would, uh, would it be worthwhile, let me just throw out the question, would it be worthwhile drawing up a contingency plan? For what, how we would hold track events? If we couldn't use it, would we go somewhere else? Would we just not have them?
Well, Tom can speak on that, but we would just.
How long would that planning take?
Tom could speak to that, but it's just a matter of us switching our events to the other team's, uh, fields. Correct, Tom?
Yeah, um, you would have to, you know, include in there busing for practices and, um, kids who don't drive. Obviously, it's, it's junior. So basically, you know, not just give you hard numbers here, is junior high, we have 100 kids that participate. High school, we have 90 to 100 kids that participate. You have 200 kids, give or take, 200 kids that practice every day on the track from three to five, with the lacrosse team practicing in the middle, um, in our stadium. So, we would have to, we would have to move 200 kids to another facility on top of a school district who has at least, I'll just say another 100 kids of their own in high school and junior high participating. I don't think it's like, um, an outdoor basketball court where there's an outdoor open track available.
We, we would have to practice on times other than the times they were going to use the field, the tracks.
Correct. And, and typically, a track in every school district that I know has a field in the middle of it that, just like us, we have events, other sporting events at night in the middle of that field where people aren't practicing around the track.
All right. So, the alternative is doable, but, but with difficulty.
With difficulty. I mean, obviously, you have the busing, you have, you know, then a rental fee for whatever school we would, that would allow us to practice there. You, you have that fee and then you, you obviously wouldn't have any home meets and every meet would be away.
Well, I think this is important enough to, to include in my report. I, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board too on this. Uh, and the rest of the administrative team as well. So I think I should include this on my report Tuesday, Dave, and, and open it up to, to the kind of discussion we're having here.
Yeah, I mean, in, in my way of thinking, I would, I would agree. In my way of thinking, it's just sort of moving off of the non-essential list into the essential list. Um, just, just because of the safety and liability issues.
Yes, yes.
And let alone all the inconvenience and, and, um, I mean, we've got a, we've got a great facility there. And to not have a functional track, to me, doesn't make any sense.
It's also the added cost. Busing, rental, that, that's.
Well, and it's something that has to be done at some point. I mean, it's sooner or later. Um, this is not, you know, and all, none of this is, this is going to have to be done at some point. So, do we bite the bullet and take care of it? And I'm, I sort of think like Anne too. I kind of think that long-term, the better, five years will be down the, the same road again. You know, these, these patches, I think, this patchwork process to me doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I know it's, it's really extraordinary cost, but, I mean, unless we go back to the old cinders, I asked Tom about whether we could do that. Because when I was at school, that's what we used. And it was a perfectly adequate service. It required a lot of preparation, you know? Our maintenance crew had to, you know, kind of, uh, make sure it was nice and flat and, and had to be, you know, continually, uh, re, I guess they put lime down for the lines and all that kind of stuff, but that was the old, was the old track. And, uh, but you said there's almost no track like that anymore. I mean, every, everything is a synthetic, synthetic track like this.
Yep.
And you had mentioned before, Dave, about looking at possibly getting like, like a bond or something like that to pay for the transportation center. This money could be rolled into that as well as an option.
Yeah.
You know, I think the other thing too is that, you know, for all of the, I guess, challenges that are associated with, you know, what we're dealing with, with COVID-19, I think for the track, there's a real opportunity here because we know from a time standpoint, like, nobody can use it. You know, like, you know, because of social distancing and shelter in place and all of those kinds of things, probably until well into the summer, people aren't going to be out anywhere anyway. So, you know, from a timing standpoint, if ever there were a good time to do it, now is probably that time.
And, and that was my, my thinking on, on Thursday, April 9th, and I'll never forget that date. It was my daughter's 11th birthday. So, um, when I go back to when did this happen, it happened on April 9th. Um, is to try to forward think and be proactive here, like I put in my email to say, we did address, I think, a number of stakeholders that this needs to be fixed this year or next year due to the way it looks. Well, if things are going to be shut down, why not take advantage of this now with the shutdown and re, have it reopen next year um, for everyone?
Well, let, let me ask you a question on that, Tom, because I know I had Mr. Perzui do some work. Uh, we had people cutting the locks off our tennis courts. Uh, we had people cut the locks in the facility at the gym, or excuse me, at the stadium. As what, you know, how do we, what, what can be done to either cover the track or, or keep people from going on that track once it is fixed?
Uh, well, I mean, we have it open. Once, once the track's fixed, I mean, we have a, a turnstile gate down below that, that probably 500 community members have passes to. Um, I mean, when I go on the camera and look, I mean, there's people on there all the time walking, all the time. Um, people running. So unless we change that policy of removing the turnstile gate, that, that's.
We're not going to be able, we couldn't, we're not able to allow them on that track in the timeframe to what's cured, correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you meant if everything goes back to normal, we, we really, um, no.
No, I'm talking about what you're, what you're proposing right now is there's a closure. So this is a good time for us to get in there and shut down the track, get it all fixed. But, but how are we going to ensure that people aren't just going to do what they're doing now, cutting locks off and crawl, you know, getting in and, and possibly damaging this $600,000 track?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what to say other than putting someone out there 24/7, which is completely unrealistic.
Are you, Dr. Phillips, are you concerned about, uh, during the construction process?
Well, during the construction process, and then if it's a, a rubber with polyurethane, obviously it needs time to set.
Yeah. Normally, normally.
Get that done.
Normally, the contractor would be responsible for securing the site while they were doing the work. So, you know, that might be some fencing, uh, you know, some, some gates. Uh, you know, that, 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 that would be generally, uh, the, the contractor's responsibility. So, uh, to keep people off because they don't want to have to come in and redo stuff they did yesterday because someone came in and messed it up. So.
That was my question.
And that would probably maintain, and, uh, I think, Tom, you had mentioned something to me earlier today about a 30 days for the adhesive to cure properly, like, you know, 30 days from when they pack up and leave, quote unquote. Uh, you're able to use that track. Well, you know, whatever, whatever, uh, security measures they had in place would probably stay up for those 30 days as well.
Okay. Do they do anything where they would cover the track? Or is it just the gate?
I don't think you want to cover the track. You want to, uh, you want the track to breathe and dry.
But that would still be their responsibility until the 30-day.
I would assume so.
I can look into that as well.
Okay, okay.
I guess another option would be to, to hire some sort of security force for the, for the hour, for the 30 days that we need to have it cured. And it seems to me that wouldn't be terribly expensive. We're protecting a, you know, up to a $650,000 investment. So you hire a security force for a month and just to make, make doubly sure. I'm not proposing, and I'm just suggesting that we think about.
When, when I was the AD at Daniel Boone and we were going through our stadium project, um, we did do that there um, in Daniel Boone, but that's.
Oh, okay.
That seems like a whole different world, um, at Daniel Boone. So, um.
Right. Any other discussion or questions for Tom or anyone about this topic? Uh, we, we've kind of the end of the agenda. Is there anything else that, uh, that anyone needs, uh, or wants us to cover today? All right, then I will be prepared to give a report on Tuesday on the transportation center, the administration building and the track, at the very least, so we can bring all these matters in front of the whole board. And, um, that's what we'll do. So if there's nothing else, I will thank you all for attending. And thank you again for setting this up. I appreciate it very much. And thanks to Joe and Joe for the technical support. And, uh, unless there's anything further, the meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Joe. Could you hang on to your ones? Everyone leaves.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Who do you want to talk to?
Ben and Rick.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Anne, do you want to, uh, stop the recording and the streaming?
Okay.
You don't need me on, right?
No, you're good. Thank you.